It's six o'clock, time for the Columbia County Planning Commission for January nineteenth. We would ask that you silence your cellphones. And if you don't mind, let's stand, Commissioner Noah will say the invocation, and Commissioner Henderson will do the pledge.
Here in most gracious God, thank you for being with our country as tonight and tomorrow we go through transfer of peaceful transfer power. On a smaller note, thank you for county as we make important decisions regarding citizens. Pray, amen.
Let's see, we have four commissioners here tonight. Our chairman, Mr. Cox, is out of town on business, so I'll be conducting the meeting for tonight. First on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the past meeting.
Then we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor, right hand. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. Next, we have the approval of the agenda for tonight. I don't think there's any additions to it.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. We have no presentations. We do have, on the consent agenda, we have thirty-four items for massage operator's license. Ms. Hall, would you like to brief us on this just a little bit?
All thirty-four of the licenses you have before you, we are recommending approval. All the applicants meet the qualifications. They are already existing businesses that are coming into compliance with the Massage Operators' License Regulations as part of their renewal for their 2017 occupational.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Like I said, this is a consent item, and we're voting on all thirty-four items at one time. Are there any questions from the commissioners or anyone else?
Let me add also, our new massage operators licenses or license ordinance allows a public comment component to this. It's not an advertised public hearing by any means, not similar to a rezoning or variance in that respect. But if there is anybody here who would like to comment on any of these or add to the discussion, they are welcome to do that.
Anyone that would like to make any comments before we spark the motions? Being done, gentlemen, I entertain a motion for approval.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion on the consent agenda to approve all thirty-four applicants.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval in a second. All those in favor? Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. Before we get into the debate agenda, I'd like to read the statement. "To clarify that the planning commission is a recommended body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance request tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on February the seventh. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at that meeting, please see Ms. Liz to obtain a request form to speak." With that being said, we have the unfinished business. We have under new business, final plan, Ms. Bistry.
Thank you, sir. This is the final plan for Eagle Creek. It's located off Williamview Parkway. It is sixty-five lots on thirty-two point eight acres. The average lot size is twelve thousand seven hundred ninety-two square feet. The minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet. Beats the requirements of R two zoning. Setbacks are thirty foot on the front and side and rear are ten. Side walks are required on both sides of the internal streets and six point five acres of open space is provided in the development. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you.
What's that little snake?
I think you drew it on the screen.
That's not...
No, that's my paper.
Any comments or questions? Someone will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the final plan for Eagle Creek, tax map zero six five, parcel zero nine, U zero nine U.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor? Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. Ms. Bistry, we have Southwind Village Phase Two.
Thank you. This is the final plan for Southwind Village Phase Two. The location is off Hereford Farm Road. It's fifty-nine lots on thirty-nine point zero five acres, and the zoning is R two. The average lot size is fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-seven and a minimum of ten thousand and thirty square feet. The setbacks are thirty foot on the front, ten foot side and rear. There is an extra note to add on this. The Phase One of Southwind was required a dissimilar zoning buffer where the lots above the R one property, and this buffer was removed during the construction of the development and has not been replanted to date. So staff recommends a condition which reads the bond for Phase Two of Southwind Village will not be released until the required buffers are installed in Phase One or the variance is approved by the Board of Commissioners. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Entertaining a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Southwind Village Phase Two, tax map zero zero six, parcel ninety-six eight F.
With conditions, sir?
With conditions.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with conditions in second. All those in favor? Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. We have no plan revisions, but we do have some public hearings. File VA one seven oh one oh one. Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for variation in section ninety-nine dash ninety-six, Evans Town Center Revolt District. For location is forty-two six three and forty-two sixty-nine Washington Road. This location of the property, again, currently the, right next to Mullins Crossing. This is Mullins Colony. They have a look at the site plan here in a minute. Current zoning, again, currently C two. It does back up to R three across the railroad tracks and has R two to the north, then again the C two to the south, and then the Ranewell Putt across the street. Airview of the site, again, it has been substantially cleared for, so some of the Riverwatch Parkway, they got some dirt on this property. And a street view of the property itself. There's a site plan of the property. This is a pretty, pretty recent site plan. I think this might be the first time it's been out in the public. What the request is for five different variations. The first one is, well, actually, as we go through the, through the slides, we'll kind of see what, what they're asking for. The first one is a variation to doors. Again, Evans Town Center is a, a pretty pedestrian focused area. And so doors have a limitation of six by ten. So the doors they're requesting are at twelve feet, which is kind of your standard commercial door. And also window openings, the Evans Town Center requires four by eight, and they're requesting... They're requesting a size smaller, larger than that to allow for increased line of sight, but they are going to have Mullins on those that's seen these pictures here to kind of break those up to provide that pedestrian scale. And also with their requests for larger windows, there are requests to go over twenty-five percent glazing. They request fifty percent. Actually, our condition increases that to sixty percent. As you've seen with some of the elevations we're looking at, there's quite a lot of glass. Not a lot, that's like some of the ones we've seen previously, but it is quite a bit. And then also, they are requesting a variation to allow shed roofs. And that's kind of what you see here. They have several pedestrian areas on the site that have these shed roofs, and also shed roofs on the buildings themselves. So that's one of their requests. The final one, I'll actually continue to go through the, the parcels here. And again, there are, again, this is a pedestrian area here. And the final one is a request for the rear, for the elevations that aren't facing the front of the property to be of a lower quality, and not say a back plot or anything. The Evans Town Center, you're required to have all four sides be high quality material. So requesting to not have to have that requirement. Staff is comfortable with allowing it at the rear of the property, it's seen here, where that does not face the, the public space. It faces railroad and also Riverwatch Parkway further behind it. But then all the buildings, you know, the other buildings is, for instance, retail D, retail E, and also the sides and fronts, retail A and A, B, and C, have to meet Evans Town Center standards. And staff has recommended approval of conditions of the property. There's several conditions. Again, the design materials used for the glazing system should meet the intent of Evans Town Center and will have to be approved by, by staff prior to building plans. Elevations facing the railroad right away may not be the requirement for the sign rail elevations to be visually attractive, but again, that only applies to the rear of the property. All the other properties will have to meet Evans Town Center, or all the other elevation will have to meet Evans Town Center standards. And also, the site design center must meet pedestrian friendly intent of Evans Town Center overlay. Again, some of that's kind of a, making sure that they follow through with, with what they've shown us. Again, the site plan is in for review, and it does have substantial not pedestrian friendly character to it. But again, just making sure it stays. And the last part is glazing should be up to sixty percent of any elevation, which is an increase over their request, because again, we felt better to have a little bit of a cushion for, for their design. That includes staff recommendation.
I have a question. On the site design, I guess we'll go back to your variation. No, the next one. Yeah. Said it must meet the pedestrian friendly intent. I go to Mullins Crossing about every day, and it's not really pedestrian friendly. I mean, it's great for cars, there are some trees, but is this unusual? I know we'll hear from the architect soon, but I just, if there's anything unusual, like this one place, one place has a parklet, as you called it. And I'm not saying that, and I understand it's a commercial venture, but is there anything that makes it unusual?
Sure, if you can go to the, the site plan, they've provided, again, this is the full site plan, they actually have sidewalks on both sides of the access roads that are connecting into Mullins, Mullins two. And also, you have a sidewalk in the middle of the parking lot that connects.
Point that out.
Sure. Yeah, the sidewalk that goes across here. You also have sidewalks. Also go here.
So in that regard, it is different from Mullins?
Yes, it's very different. And again, with, you know, with new developments, we're going to want to see more pedestrian friendly, or pedestrian components to it, especially in Evans Town Center, because then the ideas have a walkable area. Have we done the best job of that in the past? Probably not. But again, moving forward, we'll have that.
Are there any areas that are, not trying to dictate, but that have, where people can congregate?
Sure, their, their site plan, they've shown us, you know, kind of this area here, this, that area, this area, and a little bit here. But you know, you have three different spaces that are designed for outdoor, whether it be eating or gathering, a plaza type feel. You know, they've kind of shown us that on the site plan. They haven't totally finalized what it's going to look like. I would ask the architects to be aware of that if she'd like to. And that's what they've provided us.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask about the, go back to the one where it shows the outline in the back. Talks about using lesser quality material. My concern is the longevity of the building with a lesser quality material. Time. Have something that, God, facing south on, south here, I'm sure. But back here, are we, are we talking about building metal buildings here, or are we talking about, what, what's the definition of, of the quality of the material? Called it a lesser quality of material?
I would say, again, they proposed on the Belk, they're going to have some, basically a, on the back of it at least, what they've shown us so far, it's supposed to have a, it's a, it's a concrete material, but it's supposed to look like a stucco type material. So again...
So as we're, as I'm, as I'm looking at the building here, stucco and concrete is what? I'm just going to have stucco and concrete on the, I can't draw on mine, but stucco and concrete across the front and then across the back.
The, the finish for that back wall is a stucco finish to a concrete tilt up panel, and it's this... For the areas where that is, these buildings here are yet to be added, so they will cover up the side of the main store.
I mean, I understand that there's metal, the, the buildings are built interior with metal framing. I'm more concerned of the exterior look and the makeup of it, not just the appearance, but the quality of it relates to something that's going to stand.
As far as I understand it, none of this shown here has any metal panel finishes.
Okay.
This is a public hearing, is the applicant here, and would you like to come forward and discuss anything else with us? Please state your name and address for us, please.
Good evening, Megan Dalbora. And I work for Little Architects. If I could address the two comments to help clarify. So the area that you had, can I, does it mark on this? Okay. So this area right here...
Everyone can do that, except they don't allow us to play like you.
So that area that I've highlighted, we do plan to increase that for some pedestrian friendly outdoor area also. So you will have some main nodes within the center that will be outdoor placemaking, hardscape areas for pedestrians to congregate besides, you know, the pathways between, between the buildings.
Okay, so they won't be an island, so to speak? You can reach it on foot?
Correct.
Thank you.
And then also for the rear of the buildings, I wouldn't say necessarily that we're looking at a lesser construction quality. We're just looking to not put the same aesthetics. So our intention for the rear of A and C would be a CMU block, which is a high quality material that's not going to deteriorate over time. It's just not the same brick material and stone that would be on the front of the building.
Questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against variance?
I know this is a concept, but have you all had any interest from other types of retail shops or... Yeah, if you could...
Owners and developer of the project, and, you know, I, we don't have anybody that we can talk about right now other than Belk, because that, that deal is signed. But we, we have an array of different people that are looking at the shopping center, and our intent is to make, to make it, as Megan said, a very pedestrian friendly place. This, our family grew up here. We don't ever plan to sell the shopping center, so we want to make something that has a lot of longevity as far as not only what it's built, but the tenant mix that's in it. So what, what we want is a good mix of high quality retail and, and restaurants. But that's, that's why we charge little to make these areas where you can have patio seating. I don't, I don't know if we can get a restaurant in each one of those areas, but that's the goal, is to do that and to create some areas where you can sit outside that you don't always listen to a fire truck go by or a, you know, where it's actually peaceful in, in a way, and you could sit there. And, you know, the way you make a, a shopping center successful is not only to get people to come, but get them to stay there and shop at all the stores. So I can't tell you who, who those people are, because we don't have those deals signed at this point. We, we have a, there's a lot of activity going on about, about all the space, but what I want to see is a mix of tenants that, that not only attract you, but keep you there, and, and they're solid tenants that don't move in and out and a lot of transition.
It would be, like, for instance, I go to Office Depot, and then I go, or I go to Starbucks, maybe have coffee, and go.
Right, right.
Want me to linger?
That's what we want. I mean, I, you know, I mean, I'm not, I don't know what you're like, but I'm not a, even though this is my business, I don't, I don't shop a lot, so I don't, not everybody will do that, but there will be people that do that. And, and Belk will bring in a certain demographic, and that's what we want to cater to, that you're there to shop at Belk, you want to go shop at the other stores. I'm sure there'll be a place to get your nails done, hopefully, you know, it, it'll just be a whole array of things like that, some good, good food. My goal is to bring some people in that are not in, at least in Columbia County, if not in the area yet. And I, you know, when we did Phase One, which, you know, at the time, I think that was the very beginning of the Evans Town Center Overlay District. That may have been one of the early things that actually were built to that standard. And at that point, we, we actually, I think, exceeded it a little bit for what it was at the time, and it's grown over the years and improved, and hopefully, you know, we can, we can do the same kind of thing here, do an even better project that has the kind of tenants that support that type of construction that we're doing, and, and have something that is viable as the first phase has been. I think through the recession, maybe two or three tenants went out. It's, it's been very stable and gotten busier and busier. That was the, that's the only coals in the area. This is Belk's reintroduction into the market, and, you know, I think we'll be able to bring some tenants in that are, that they're new to the area, or at least new to Columbia County, and, and stay there, have a lot of stability. That's my goal.
Had a lot of opportunity for massage parlor.
There's nothing wrong with those, but, but no, we, we're actually prohibited against those.
Yeah. No, I've, I've probably asked Robbie Bennett this morning. Can't say one without it. Is there any desire to bring, you talk about restaurants, is there any desire to bring in anything other than chain?
Oh, yeah.
Chain heavy in Columbia County?
I mean, absolutely. If, if, if those people, you know, step forward and we can find them, sure. I mean, I love local, I mean, I don't want to plug, I don't think it's fair to plug, you know, one restaurant and not another, but I, there's some local restaurants here that have this kind of outdoor seating in a not heavily congested area that I love to go to. I'll probably go to one tonight after this. And I, if we can convince them to come, come to the shopping center, that would be a very high priority. You know, I have my list of wants and desires, and then you got to deal with the reality of who will actually come. And it's a very, very busy area, so we'll see. But yes, I, if I, if they, if they're there, we, we would, they would take priority over it.
Mr. Mullins said, "To enhance the pedestrian aspect of this and maybe help with traffic, would you ever entertain walkway between the two sections?"
If I had the power to do that, it would be done, but I don't. The, the other side hasn't agreed to that. We actually, if you look on the site plan, well, it doesn't show it here, but in front of, it, it just, in front of retail E, well, the, yeah, and the larger one, I guess I can, yeah, right there. We can only build to the property line, which is the center of the power line. I have asked repeatedly to, to the current owners of, of the shopping center that we used to own, if we can make that connection, and they just have not responded to this point. So I can't, I don't have the power to make that happen, but we're going to build, in fact, we just had that discussion, the general contractor is here, John Martin with RW Allen. My intent is to build that road right to the edge of the property line and hopefully encourage them to let us connect. When, when we sold this, I tried to reserve the right to do that, but it requires, excuse me, the approval of, of several of the large tenants, and they were not willing to give it at the time. So we're looking for ways to get them to agree to do that, and I want to do that. I think it makes a lot of sense for that to happen, and it's good for both sides. They'll, they'll, there'll be some duplicity of tenants with, with this much space, there, there has to be. And I think there's, you know, there, there, that may be the point of, of the target side is that, you know, our competition is over here, we don't want to give you easy access. But people, it's like food at a, at a, at an exit of the interstate. You go where there are more options than less, and it's the same thing here. So hopefully that'll die down, they'll see their sales are okay, and, and we can get some agreement to this. We want that to happen, and I'm doing everything I can to make it happen. I just can't do it without their agreement.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I mean, don't want people going out on Washington Road, going out and then going back in.
We, we've explored every possible way just to go ahead and do it, and we, in fact, I just, that was a discussion we just had. I think if I go ahead and do it, they'll, they'll probably file charges on me for trespass if I cross their property line and pave, it's only maybe forty feet, and the road just wants to connect, but I can't do it unless they agree. So we're going to build everything that I can build, stop it and stub it out, and be ready for what I think will be the inevitable day that those two connect, hopefully sooner rather than later. I, I support it and promote it, and I'm going to try to make it happen as...
Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Being no one else would like to speak, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Got a small hand on it, in fact. He had his hand on it before he closed it.
Did he?
He did.
Would you like to speak, young man? No?
Might be, have more to say than what we have.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the conditions stated on number VA seventeen oh one oh one, the Evans Town Center Overlay District.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor? Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. Next, we have file VA one seven oh one oh two. Ms. Boltie?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to section ninety dash one thirty-five. That's the signs for a property at forty seventy-five Evans to Locks Road. This property's kind of on the north side of Evans to Locks, near the intersection with Blue Ridge Drive, and it is currently zoned P one professional. There is some additional professional and C one neighborhood commercial zoning in the area, but otherwise, this property is surrounded by various intensities of residential zoning. This is the aerial of the property of the two existing buildings, and the street view, you can only see the, the front building from the road there. In the top left of this slide, you can see the previous sign that was on this property. The sign was permitted in two thousand nine, has a thirty square foot monument sign. The sign was replaced earlier last year. The bottom right picture is the image of the new sign. The sign is ninety-one square feet and was installed without permits. The P one and CSO district permits sixty square feet total for the sign structure. The P one and CSO district permits sixty square feet total for the sign structure. The sign is just over fifty percent above that at ninety-one square feet. Evans to Locks is not a, a major commercial corridor and this location is not in one of our activity centers. As mentioned earlier, this is largely a residential area. There is some professional and low intensity commercial nearby. They are all limited to that, that same sign requirement. This property is fairly typical for the area. It's typical size. There's nothing particularly unusual about it that would necessitate a variance, and Steph is recommending disapproval of the request.
Thank you.
Now, why are you recommending disapproval?
Largely the, the location of the property in this residential area and with the, it, it's a fairly typical property for the area. There's nothing exceptional about it that would prohibit it from conforming to the, the sign code as it's written.
So your specifics comment is that it doesn't meet sign.
Right. So the, the sign as installed is the ninety-one square feet. They're allowed sixty. So they're, they're quite a bit over what they're allowed without what, what we would consider a justification for granting that variance and that additional size.
This is a public hearing. There's the applicant here, and he would be, like to bring us some more information. Please come to the podium and introduce yourself with your address.
All right, give us these to you all.
I'd like to read this, this statement first that you have on here. Trinity Gray Media installed and updated a roadside sign at our place of business on Evans to Locks Road. Our mission was to create and implement a new sign to replace our existing dilapidated sign. We felt that the older sign was outdated, didn't represent our business or the community in the proper way. As a matter of fact, the electronic sign above has been out for two years. Doesn't, doesn't work. The new signage that we installed over the pre-existing structure was framed out around the pillars and the electronic sign that was previously there. We framed the pre-existing sign out of two by fours, vertically adding one point seven five inches of width to all four sides, with a one by eight cedar installed on top of that, adding point seven five inches of additional width. Two point five inches of additional square footage for each face, making the change of the sign from eighty-two square feet to ninety-one square feet. So the sign that was up there, and evidently it was up there when I got there, is, was eighty-two square feet. In addition, the pillars that are holding up the signage are mounted within the retention pond in front of our property, which is below ground level, making a sign of lesser size, not as visible from the road. In addition to that, because of the retention pond, we have to have bushes in front of the sign also. The lettering and the template of the sign cost us about six thousand dollars. Installation of the sign, about forty-five hundred dollars. Material was built out, that for the build out was seventeen five. The electrician nine hundred, totaling the sign a little over thirteen thousand dollars is what we put into it. And as you can see by the old sign, it was obviously not a very pleasant sign. We're requesting the variance for the pre-existing signage to add the additional square footage for, for now, for the existing signage. And if you look on your list, this was in, in August. We measured the sign. This is the drawing that we made of what was there, the, the measurements. It's basically nine feet by nine feet. This was the mock-up that we made of the sign. So this is all done before we went in. So this, you see the next sheet is the actual sign that was there with the measurements of the sign. It was nine feet by nine feet, and the new sign is nine by seven, nine by two. As you can see too, there's very little space on this property with the retention pond to even have a sign. Cannot put it to the left of the driveway. You're facing the driveway. I can't put it to the left. I can't put it on the other side of the retention pond. This is the only place for a sign. And of course, we had to cut down the big bush so you could see it at all. And these are just different visuals of the sign from different points of the road. And as you can see by what we have with the retention pond and the bushes that we have to have there, they're on one side of the sign. You can't even read the Super Saver still below. This is the retention pond. So you can see how it's built. And then you can see the pillars and the two by fours that we framed around it. You can see exactly what we used. That's what all of these are. To show that we just framed it with two by fours around and then added one by eight planks the outside of the sign. We have, we feel like we needed to update our image. We are a growing company. We've been here for about nine, well, we've been here for twenty-five years with Super Saver coupons. But at Trinity Gray Group, our advertising agency, we've been around for about fourteen years now. And our business, since we won a couple Emmys about a year ago, has really increased. So we felt like we needed to do something. We actually did the sign because we had a big group coming in from Atlanta to talk to us about marketing for their franchise, that they were going to start franchising. And we felt like we needed to get something done before they came in because the old sign looked so bad. So did I get permission? No, I, I did not. I'm not debating that. I felt like if we were just putting the skin over the old sign, we would be fine. Plus the updating, obviously that's not the case. But I do want you to know that the sign that was there ever since I was in the building was an eighty-one, was eighty-one square feet. But we are at, at ninety-two now. That's.
I have questions on.
Sure.
How the bare footage is measured? Across the top. Previous measurement, obviously is the one.
Right.
Talking square foot. Talking about the facing, not.
There are separate allowances in the code for each of those measurements. So they're allowed a, a certain amount of sign face, the actual advertising portion, and then they're allowed a certain overall structure area that accounts for all the mounting as well. For this property, that overall structure is sixty square feet and the, the face, the actual advertising is forty square feet.
So this, if I understood correctly, this is a sign that's obviously older, probably built under code.
That's possible. It was permitted in two thousand nine. I can't see what the sign code was.
Most likely in two thousand nine, the sign code was probably the, the same that it is now, same allowances.
It's my understanding that right now we're working on a new signage code for Columbia County. So I don't know what that code is, and it might change and we'll be fine. I don't, I don't know. But I was told we'd be working on it. I was also told by the gentleman that came out to measure the sign that we had to count the base that is in the ground. That has to be counted. It's not just the face of the sign inside of the post. We had to count the full post, the complete width of that. And if it's that, if that is the case, like what I was told, then it is eighty-one square feet, not sixty. So it would have never fit within the code that they're saying that we are allowed to do.
Who was the gentleman? I mean, somebody from the county?
Yes. Mm-hmm. They came out to measure the sign.
I have a question. Sure. This previous sign was permitted at the thirty square foot monument? How did it?
They said in, what they sent me, it was only sixty square feet that was allowed. But the sign that was there was eighty, eighty-two square feet? Is that what I heard? Eighty-two square, eighty-one square feet? So that's the sign that's always been there since I have been in the building.
Do you mind if I see what he's measuring, how he's measuring that?
You mentioned it and you acknowledged it.
Mm-hmm.
Lack of applying for a permit.
Absolutely. Right.
Give us a, 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 give us a, a reason?
A reason?
Or an explanation?
Yes. I mean, I, I tried to, to tell you why. We have a company that we are trying to get an account for. Could possibly be a hundred thousand dollar account. We've already met with them once, twice in Atlanta. They wanted to come see our facility. In the back of the building, we have another building that is a studio. And we've also created a, a suite there. We call it Creative Suite. It's really beautiful looking, has all our awards. So, you know, obviously we bring people there to try to impress them, to get their business. And when we were looking at the sign out front, we're saying, well, they're going to be here in three weeks, two and a half weeks. They pulled in to see this sign, you know, we, that really is going to look bad. Not to mention our roof is very faded, so we're in the process of hiring somebody to come reface the roof and all that. So we're trying to upgrade the property to give it a better look. So I did it hoping that, you know, I could get it up before they came. So, you know, we would work all day and then work on it on the weekends to, to get it done. Like I said, I didn't think we were adding very much. Obviously, you can see that the, the look is, is much improved over what we had. And, and I think it does feel right for the area. If, I know that they brought the plat up, but the, if you look at the building to the, to, if you're facing the building to the right, is zoned for business. To the left is two lots that have been empty like that ever since. I am actually talking to the gentleman about buying part of that lot. Though it would only be beneficial to me that we need some more parking. And my goal is in two years to tear all of this down and build a brand new building. We are rapidly outgrowing our building. When I first was in there, we had five people sharing that one building. We are now at twenty employees and we are packed. We probably have room for about five more. We've been, we've been very blessed. You know, it's, the business is growing. But of course, you take every dime you make and you reinvest it back into your business. So, you know, it's not like I'm making a fortune, but I am investing in my business. And my son is working with me now. He's been with me for four years. He's done an incredible job. And this is what he used to do. He worked in San Francisco for Levi Strauss in marketing, and that's what he used to do. He used to go do buildings and find marketing and design structures and all that. So he's the one that designed the sign for us. We were trying to figure out the best way to do it. And of course, the least expensive way for us to do it, and it still ended up costing quite a bit. Because we did want an impressive sign. We did want it. And let me say too, that across the street, there's three acres that are zoned for business also. And on the corner there, there's a strip center right there. So there's a lot of business right there. You know, it's maybe not developed yet, but they're trying to sell three acres across the street that have already been changed to be business. You've got the strip center across from that. You've got my office, the place next door. And I'm hoping if I can, you know, apply and buy some of the property on the other side of me, there's another half acre that I would like to purchase to be able to have enough room to build a new studio and a new building that we're going to need to house about fifty to seventy people in. So I'm trying to get ready for the future. I'm trying to plan out, you know, what we, what we want to do in the future. And if I can't do it here, you know, I have to do it somewhere else. So I live literally almost across the street. One of the reasons that I love this place, I've lived there for twenty-five years in the same house in Halifax North. I am one mile from my front door to my office, and I, and I love that. And I, I love this community. They've been amazing to, to me and my businesses over the last twenty-five years. So, you know, what I do, I'm obviously trying to enhance the county and the community that I live in. So I get it. I get it that I didn't apply for it. I just knew that I would not have time to get the sign put up before those people came. And I got to tell you, when they came in, they made a comment about our sign. And we've had tons of people that call and say, that sign is so beautiful. That one you had was awful. This one's great. So we've had a bunch. And we've actually had people that have come into our business and say, what do you guys do here? I love your sign out front. We had two people that came in. One lady came in from, had just moved here a month ago from Washington State. She saw our sign and came in and says, what do you guys do? We told her. She set an appointment with us, and she said, well, here's what I do. I work with new businesses out in California and Washington, doing marketing for their new businesses, helping them develop packages. I would love to use you guys to help me do my marketing for these businesses. I think she's brought us two accounts, Rat? Two accounts so far from there.
Let me ask you.
Sure.
Had you won several Emmys from this? I mean.
Yes, we did.
Movie Emmys from Hollywood?
Yeah, we did a couple PSAs that we did. One, a texting and driving PSA. You guys may have seen it. It's been seen by about three hundred million people on Facebook over the last year and a half. The text and drive PSA that we did with Channel Six. And, and then we did one was a teenage drinking and driving video for a company that works outside of Atlanta with teenage drinking and driving. And we won an Emmy for that also, which I'm very proud of since we were up against Sports South.
Have you heard from any neighbors? I noticed you've got McKinney's Branch and Jones Creek over there. Have you heard from any of the neighbors in that area?
The only thing that we've heard from anybody is, I really like your sign. That's the only, not one complaint. I've not had one complaint. Everybody's just been, you know, I'm glad that you did that. It looks so much nicer and better. And before the sign went out, it would blink all night long. So I'm sure they really hated that, you know.
And when did you purchase property?
I, I purchased it in, that, seven years ago, but I rented it for about four years.
I thought you'd been in the county twenty-five. I'm, I'm.
I have.
I've heard four days.
I had, that's just not where my office was. I lived in my house twenty-five years across the street. So when this came open, I used to have an office in my, in my bedroom.
Okay.
When I started, and then in my garage. And then I moved down to Alexander Drive because I found a place for four hundred dollars a month. And then when I finally could afford something better, this came open, and I, I've been in it for about eleven years.
Okay. And you weren't aware that there were sign regulations?
You know, I just, I, I, obviously, there's always regulations. I'm, you know, you know that I knew that there were regulations. But my thinking was that it wasn't enough difference. And then the other old sign had burned out. It wasn't working. So I didn't think there was enough difference in what we had and what we were doing.
Sorry to interrupt, but I'm just running out of time.
Sure.
What could you do to make the sign in compliance? Would you have to chop off? Have you talked to people about?
Yeah, we have. Well, we, because of where the posts are down in the retention pond, we would, we would have to just cut those off. And to be able to make it narrower and shorter, we'd have to still get it up. So it would depend on, you know, do I have to count where the posts are? Because I can bring it up about three boards and take it down about two boards, and we'd be at about seventy something, Rat? About seventy?
So, and to clarify that, that eighty-one square foot measurement that he's saying the original was, there's a sizable gap right in the middle of the sign that, that isn't counted or wasn't counted in the original sign permit. So it was basically all of that, all of that structure that you see, the posts and the sign face, minus that big hole in the middle.
Well, see, I didn't know you minus the big hole in the middle. I just, when he managed, he made it from post to post, and I figured that's, you know.
Well, now, I mean, obviously, there's no hole in it.
Yeah.
You've got a big block.
Right.
What I'm trying to do is figure out how you can maybe modify the sign and be in compliance.
Well, we would have to, I mean, we would have to do some kind of, we would, the bad thing is, is that we can't modify this because the lettering is, was all handmade. And that, when we put them in the boards, we had to, they had a thing that went over it, and we drilled the holes, but then we glued each one of them in. So you would literally have to cut the metal off of the back of them and then have somebody reattach. So, you would literally have to cut the metal off of the back of them and then have somebody reattach a metal structure to put them back in wood again. The only thing that we know we could do is take the lights off the top and drop it down, but the problem is, is that, that metal sign is behind there. So, we'd have to get in there and get that sign out too.
I'm trying to help you figure out.
I appreciate that.
Because staff has recommended disapproval.
Right.
And short of taking the sign down and making it in compliance, I'm seeing how you can modify.
Right.
And then maybe come back to us with a, a proposal, show what you could do. I, I haven't, other commissioners, I don't.
You know what, you're just looking at it, obviously, without having the, the measurements in front of me. It, it looks like the sign face is probably fine. It looks like the sign face is at least close to what, to what is allowed. So, you know, the actual words and symbols you have on your sign are probably okay. Again, I don't know, I don't have the measurement in front of me, but.
Right.
You know, it, it looks like the, the only issue here is the actual structure area itself. So, it, you could leave the words alone.
Right.
And, and shift them, and just decrease the structure area, and you'd be fine.
But get a chainsaw and cut off the left and right? I, I don't.
Pro-bar, chainsaw?
They framed up around the, the old sign, it's.
Right, it's framed up around the old sign.
They, they, you can't cut the side without getting rid of it.
That's correct.
Right, so, off the top and the bottom.
I don't know if that top piece, but, yeah, I mean, it.
It's, it's up to you guys. I mean, if you're.
Inclined to.
Cause it covers up the post.
If, if you're inclined to, if you're inclined to grant a variance, this is the moot point, but if you're inclined to deny the variance, looking for options. So, it's up to you guys.
And the other thing too, guys, is we have to get it up high enough. As you can see, the bushes already cover, and by law, we have to have those bushes around that retention pond, is my understanding. So, we can't cut the bushes down either.
No, you know, I think they're just, there's, has to be landscaping around the pond. They don't have to be screened with those bushes necessarily. I, I spoke with Gary Richardson about this. I mean, you don't, don't feel you have to keep those bushes by any means. If you want to put some more attractive landscaping around it, feel free.
Okay.
That gets both, both ends there. More, more visibility, but also the landscape around the pond.
I, I was told that we had to have enough landscaping that you didn't actually see the pond.
No, I think, you know, the, the grade here helps you out too, 'cause, you know, cars are below it, so it hides it.
Could I, could I recommend table this, and you come up with a, a proposal that, I don't, I don't care if you cut the bushes, but I mean, somehow that you can meet it, beat the requirements and work with staff on this?
The one thing that we did, I will say that we did talk to somebody about, is if we take it, the wood out behind the soup, underneath the coupon, where it says coupon there, and stack stone there.
I, I just.
I don't know if that is, is.
It's, it's still part of the structure, whether it's wood or stone. So, structure area is, is the, is the deal here. So, it's, it's just the amount of stuff behind the, behind the words.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but does, does that meet, would staff go along with that if we tabled it and he comes up? Mr. Bailey comes up with some alternative?
Well, I mean, are you, are you asking him to come up with an alternative that meets the code?
Yeah.
Well, if that's the case, then, you know, that sounds like a denial of, of the sign variance.
All right, he comes back for.
He comes back, he has to come back regardless.
Well.
Sir, can I back up a little bit?
Sure.
When did, when did it become apparent to you that you needed to apply for a variance?
When I got a letter from the county, and you have a new sign. You need, you have fifteen days to.
So, we have, you've mentioned that there's a lot of businesses going in around you. All of them may look at the variance, and they may want the same thing.
You know what? You, you, I'm not, I'm not going to debate that that's the case. You know, that's for sure. There's, I, I promise you, there's things out there that I wish I had, could get to, but I can't because I'm not grandfathered in. So, I know that there are, that there are rhymes and reasons, and one of the reasons that we have a difficult time with this sign is that because of the retention pond, we, we, you know, the sign base goes down into the pond on one side, so. And to be able to get up enough over the bushes to read the sign, we have to come up. So, it's just a matter of, do we count where the base is? If we have to count where the bases are, then, I mean, there's no way I can get it up high enough to be able to use this type of structure, a wood structure. I would have to take it down and buy, get a pole and do a plastic cover, which would not look anywhere near as nice as this.
Mr. Kirkland, if, if this is removed by the applicant without prejudice, how, what's the time period that he would have to come back to this commission?
You're talking about the application?
Yes, sir.
If he were to withdraw without prejudice, he could come back immediately with a new application for variance.
Would it be another twelve hundred and fifty dollars?
Uh-huh. It, it would. It would, I mean, it'd be a new application fee. I'm, I'm not seeing the, the advantage to doing that necessarily.
Right, I, I had to pay it double because I, I did it before. I had, so I, I paid, instead of six twenty-five, I paid twelve fifty already, standing here in front of you guys.
So, so, right, right now, the, the question is, before you, to grant a variance, to allow a larger sign or not. If, you know, to provide a little bit of guidance, if you intend to, to grant a variance at all, to allow a larger sign, you know, there's an advantage to tabling and him coming back with an option that, that may be closer to the allowed size, but maybe still over.
And would he have to pay six hundred or twelve hundred dollars?
No, I mean, if, if you, if you tabled the, the request, you can give enough time to, to go back and consider options.
I was thinking.
Okay. But, I mean, if, if you're inclined to say no to the variance anyway, then there's no advantage to tabling it or not, right? Because either, if you say no to the variance, he just has to meet the code, period.
Right. And let me just say, we have had two contractors come out already and say, "How can we fix this? How can we make it?" And pretty much what they're telling us, you're gonna have to take out the posts on each side. That's gonna have to come out. You're gonna have to put in a new post. It's a single post at the bottom. Of course, then you're gonna see, you know, this much of a pole, you know, and then the sign above it, and.
I just go back to what, yeah, what the code is. And I, I would like to make a motion that we tabled this for what, a month? So, you can come back with alternatives to what you're gonna do. Otherwise, I'd recommend disapproval.
Okay. Ultimately, gentlemen, what's gonna have to happen is I'm gonna have to tear this sign down, build something to be in code. I mean, I, that's really, from what they're both telling me.
But ultimately, you didn't follow the rules.
I, I am not, I'm not debating that. I am standing in front of you, asking for forgiveness, not from, you know, and.
I think what, what you're missing here, the opportunity, the opportunity to come back and maybe mitigate the damage, completely redoing the whole thing.
Right.
Try to find a way, hire, you know, hire a sign company and say, "Tell me how to do this without paying," and.
Right.
So, that's the opportunity that.
I, I, you know, I, that, that's great. I mean, I certainly would rather have that than to say, you know, "No, take it down." I'd like to try to figure out a way, but we have, we have had two contractors come out, and I haven't had a sign company come out, but I've had a contract, two contractors come out, so.
Recommend a sign.
You know?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
All right, thank you very much.
This is a public hearing. I know we got motion on the floor. It's an idea. Does anybody else want to speak for or against the sign? You need to come forward, sir, please.
This is my son. Hey, how are y'all doing? Rhett Bailey. The, unless we replace the posts that were pre-existing, the, and it'll be an eighty-one square foot sign. So, the existing structure that was there, unless we cut out the middle of the sign, wouldn't be eighty-one square feet and not going to be within code regardless. That's my, that was, that's my one hangup with this, is that if we took the boards down on the bottom and reinforced that, it would still be, wouldn't be within code regardless of what we did. It wasn't in code when we, when we built this structure on top of it, or wasn't.
You realize you're forcing us to disapprove this?
No, no, I'm not.
What you're saying.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm putting that out there, that we can, we can look for a variation of this and see if we can come back and do that. But the reason that we paid double, 'cause we said we were incorrect in what we did, so that's why we played the penalty in order to do that. And with this, needing to, needing to take these boards off and to redo this, is, we will go back and look at it, but I wanted for you guys to look at this and see, is there a way to do this without completely tearing the sign down or before we even got it?
I'm not in the sign business. I don't know. I'm leaving it up to you. Here you are, leaving it up to you.
Yes, sir.
Come up with something and put, and the, the motion say thirty?
If it's tabled, it gives you time to do exactly what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
To be with the staff and discuss what, what your solution is.
And to answer your question before, has anybody around had any bad things to say about it? And it's quite the differ, I had a gentleman that runs the Healthwise in Grove Town, the Nutritional Resources Inc., came to us, and he said, "I live in Jones Creek, and I saw y'all sign, and I want y'all to do work with us." So, we went there and had a meeting with him. So, not only is it creating, not only is it creating attention, but we're getting positive attention and putting more money back in the community because we, we, but we'll look for a variance and figure out what we can do. And I know that y'all are wanting for us to figure it out because y'all aren't wanting to us to have to tear it down. That's why you're giving us the opportunity.
Yeah, we're trying to help you.
Right.
I get it. We just have to figure it out. I'm just gonna try to figure it out without spending another ten thousand dollars.
If we took the board, so does, does the post count, is what I'm saying? If we took the bottom three foot off of it, and does that, is it still structure that supports?
I think that's where you need to come and sit down with staff here.
Yes, sir.
Work with them.
Okay.
Let them guide you, and, and, because ultimately, if, if they believe in it, most, almost every occasion, if they recommend an approval, they did the heavy lifting.
Right.
So, we probably go with that.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate your time.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
With that being said, we'll close the public hearing, and I believe there is, is there a motion?
And, and just to clarify that motion, there's a meeting at, at the end of February, February sixteenth. That's two meetings away, two planning commission meetings away. Is that intent to table to then or beyond that date?
I, I, I will actually be out of town from, until the nineteenth, from the fifteenth, from the fourteenth to the nineteenth.
Can your son represent you?
I, he could. I don't, I wouldn't want that to happen, since I would like to be involved. You know, I mean, he's very capable, I'm not debating that. I would like to be involved.
An endorsement.
Then you, then you're looking at March?
March would be great.
March second.
March second would be wonderful.
Okay, I modify.
Table to March second.
I modify the motion to, uh, March second.
Okay. So, by March second, we'll have a plan for you, working with you guys, and then we'll present that plan to you before we do it, and you'll say yes or no to it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to table until March second. All those in favor? Those opposed, same side? Motion carries four zero. Next, we have file VA one seven oh one oh three, Ms. Bulte.
Yes, sir, this is also a request for a variance to section ninety-one thirty-five. This is for the property at fifty forty-five Parham Road. Located southeast of Grove Town, off of Parham Road, near the Richmond County line. It is currently zoned S one, that's our special district. This was approved in twenty-fourteen for an office warehouse complex that has since been built on the site. You can see the adjacent property, the zone C three, and it's heavy commercial with additional S one across Parham Road and the railroad bounding the property on the other side, residential zoning across that railroad track. And this is the area of the site. This was obviously prior to the development on the property. Google Earth caught them in progress, and these are the existing buildings on the site. There are two buildings. They are office warehouse spaces. They have space for a total of twelve tenants on the property. And the proposed sign is a hundred and seventy square foot total structure. It has eighty-three square feet of sign face. It provides, obviously, the, the center name at the top, and then the twelve tenant panels. Each tenant panel is roughly one and a half feet tall, three feet wide. Basically, the intent is just to be able to identify all twelve tenants in the center from the sign. Since the property is currently zoned S one, they wouldn't be limited to sixty square feet of structure with forty square feet of sign face, so they are well over that. However, in, in this case, the immediately adjacent properties are that C three, that heavy commercial, and if this property was similarly zoned, this sign would be allowed by right. And the use on the property is a typical C three-type use. The sign's therefore in keeping with the nature of the, the area and with the development on the property, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bulte. This is a public hearing. The applicant here, and he'd like to come up and address us.
Hello, my name's Bill McGahy. Herb Newsome and I are building this together. Obviously, it has, it has been pre-approved, I guess, and it's waiting for the blessing of this committee. And I'll be more than happy to share with you a little information on the project. I know we've run long here. I don't intend to preach to anybody. They mentioned to us that county was in dire need of some Class A office space. Provided that, uh, house space. County Commission approved this a few years ago, and they were pretty elated that we were not gonna continue to be in the racetrack business by buying that property. So, we would certainly appreciate the approval of this committee to use the signage that is, that is indicated here on the screens.
Any questions?
Fair footage of the office.
Well, it's, it's in there, but it's two thousand square feet. We have twenty-four thousand square feet on the roof, two buildings, encompassing in two buildings. And one derogatory thing is that it's in the hole a little bit. It hadn't have been in the hole, in a hole, if you will, the sign would not have needed to be quite as large as it is, but.
Could you show us where, on the, where's the sign going to be? On the elevation?
It's in that book that's being passed around.
Okay, so it's not on what staff? Are there two signs?
Just one, sir.
About two arrows here.
Two arrows is, is, those arrows indicate the, uh, one, one property was old racetrack. The other property is the two, is the three point six acres that we are building the flex space on.
Okay. Can you just? I can't mark on my screen, just on your screen.
Where, where the sign?
Yeah.
They, you see on your screen?
You can, you can touch.
And mark on it.
Okay, right here, right here.
Okay.
It would, it would be right in the, as the entrance that's going into the property.
Okay.
But it probably, it would probably be on through the right side of the driveway. We don't want to impede any traffic coming and going, 'cause we're, we anticipating some tractor-trailer trucks in, there.
Okay, thank you. Notice in the one picture, it didn't have bays for tractor-trailer.
We got the space. We did all, we did all the.
Have the bays where the trucks come back, full-size.
Fourteen feet.
Thank you, Mr. McGahy.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. This is a public hearing. Is anyone else would like to speak for or against the project? None being said, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve variance VA one seven dash zero one dash zero three, affirmative of the sign.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor? Those opposed, like side? Motion carries four zero. We have no legal matters under staff comments? I think we have something to address.
Yeah, let me, uh, let me bring you up to speed on a couple of things. Mr. Bailey hinted at one of the items. We have a, four ordinance amendments, text amendments to initiate this evening. One of those is the sign code rewrite. He's been, he, he mentioned that, Mr. Bailey mentioned that. Staff has been working with the Chamber of Commerce and a couple other individuals on revising the, our current Columbia County sign ordinance, making some changes, trying to go in a different direction. We hope to have that for you for consideration sometime next month. Either the end of February, or maybe that first meeting in March. So, tabling it to the first meeting in March. So tabling it to the first meeting in March, uh, uh, the, the sign variance may be fortuitous because we may have a text amendment to consider that evening.
Would Mr. Bailey's?
No, he wouldn't.
Okay.
He'd still be too big. He'll be too big.
That's how bureaucracy works and I just thought.
Um, no, yeah, no. That, that was the first thing I checked when he submitted his, his sign variance. But, um, uh, in addition to that, we also have a couple of text amendments that we actually hope to have before you next month, uh, February sixteenth. Um, one of those being, uh, temporary uses ninety dash one forty-three. Um, and there's a couple of changes in section ninety dash one forty-seven that'll need to be made to account for that as well. Um, and then we also intend to have a, a text amendment ready for ninety dash one forty-four, which is our placement of buildings and structures to deal with some of the fence issues that we've seen, uh, fence variance, uh, issues that we've seen in the past, um, specifically on corner lots. So, um, we have four text amendments we want to initiate and, uh, we'll get the ball rolling on those.
Have those prior to the meeting?
Of course. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, uh, thank you. Gentlemen, we'll need a, uh, motion to initiate those amendments.
Yeah, I move to initiate the amendments presented by, in a, okay. Uh, motion to initiate text amendments to section ninety dash one three five for signs. Section ninety, let's do them one at a time?
Mm-hmm.
One at a time?
You have to say the section number specifically. Our ordinance requires that. I'm serious, it does.
Okay, well then let's, uh, then I move to initiate text amendment to section ninety dash one three five signs.
We could do them all at the time, okay?
All at once. I just asked.
Huh?
Can say them all at once.
Well, that's what I just asked.
No, we don't have to have a motion on each, oh, I'm sorry. No, you don't have to motion on each one. You have to, you have to read out, uh, it's a bad question.
Take the record off.
Go away.
Oh my God, just end the meeting.
All right. If we can do thirty-four massage parlors, or massage salon- We passed thirty-four massage parlors in five minutes. Okay, uh, I make a motion to initiate text amendments to section ninety dash one three five signs, section ninety dash one four three temporary uses, section ninety dash one four four placement of buildings and structures, and section ninety dash one four seven use provisions.
Second. We have a motion, uh, and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero. Any comments, uh, from commissioners? Any comments from, uh, public? Anybody would like to make any comments? Uh, with no comments, so no further business, I would ask for a motion.
I move that we adjourn.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
That's the quickest thing you did tonight.
We spent more time on this than we did on the, a multi-billion dollar project.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. How you feeling?
Okay, okay, okay. Get a little stronger every day.
Good to see you, man.
Yes, sir.
Good to be back.
You were missed. Thank you.